Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen of March 7, 2023. This is a hybrid meeting, so the following notice must be read into the record. The notice is as follows. This is the formally advised as required by General Laws, Chapter 30, A, Sections 18 through 25, in pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021, as extended by special legislation. Dated July 16, 2022, the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, March 7, 2023, at 6:00 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 through 28 South Yarmouth, Mass. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below. And then there's a information on how to access this meeting remotely. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item is public announcements. So St. Patrick's Day Parade is this Saturday. It starts at 11:00 PM.
AM.
I'm sorry, AM. And it should be approximately two hours or so. Tom Nicconello is going to give us some details because he is one of the elite members of the Parade Committee.
Thank you all, Mr. Chairman, and Tom Nicconello. And this week, I rearranged my last name, and it's Tommy O'Nick for this week. So, thank you very much. And as you stated, we have a wonderful event coming in less than 90 hours away, and we hope to have a fun, full, action-packed adventure time. And we'd like to thank you all for making it possible as we host thousands of people coming to our community and visiting our shops and our hotels and our parks and our beaches and everything else they want to see. And we're going to have over 100 participants. We have some unicyclers and jugglers and about six pipe bands, Mr. Rittenhour. I know you were concerned about that. But no, it's going to be fun. It's Saturday. It's 11:00 AM step off. And for those people that want to drive around, there'll be a detour. Have some patience with us. The event won't last too long. Hopefully, by 3:00, the road will be open. And thank you all once again.
Thank you.
You all there?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Any other public announcements? I'm not going to go to public comment yet, but just announcements of events or anything like that. Okay. So on public comment, Bruce Murphy asked to be recognized, our health agent, to give us an update on a COVID matter.
Good evening. Bruce Murphy, Director of Health. Thank you for inviting me here. Just as an update on the COVID, what we've seen outbreak at Windsor Nursing Home. It started February 21st. It went somebody that they believe it was somebody asymptomatic that probably spread it, but there was also visitors in there, so it's really hard to pinpoint. Three-quarters of the residents and staff have been fully vaccinated, but they had milder symptoms. Unfortunately, there were several deaths. And but if you're in that COVID period, they always put COVID down, even though you might have some secondary health issues. So I've been in touch with the administrator over there pretty much daily. Department of Public Health also pretty much a daily contact. They come down with these large cases and really take over the operation, staffing, and make sure they have appropriate staffing. They felt after the Department of Public Health, after meeting with their administrator, not town administrator, excuse me, that they needed to send the state Rapid Response Team down. So they sent, I believe it was 13 to 15 nurses and CNAs to help staff on the floor, to give them some assistance. I asked about the food kitchen area. They did have enough staff to provide meals, and that's always a concern on an outbreak or even of a smaller one at some of the homes. So they were able to take care of that. So it's under DPH control. Their cases are starting to level off and drop off now. They've cleared several numbers that were positive now that they have been retested as negative. They've had enough supply from state for personal protective equipment and test kits. All the testing of the positives were on self-test kits, so that will not go into our statistics for a number of positive cases coming out this week because they weren't tested at the hospital. So we'll just stay in touch. It looks like it's waning down. There's been a couple other outbreaks, not this large, in some other nursing homes across the state also. So that's the general overview.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Vita Morris said she had something related to this matter, so I'm going to have her go. I don't want our state rep who's going to address this shortly to...
Vita Morris.
Crossfire.
I would be interested to know if there is such a statistic of those who came down, how many might have been what one would refer to as possibly overvaccinated, in other words, with booster shots and what have you? Because I remember reading about data that was coming out towards the end of summer where there were different outbreaks in different places. And the data showed that the ones who were coming down at that point were those who were vaccinated and boosted and re-boosted and what have you, the ones that would be considered, I would consider, overvaccinated. And they were the ones who also were more likely to land in the hospital rather than people who may have just had, you know, the initial vaccination or not even not vaccinated at all. So I think it would be interesting to see if we can, you know, run that down. Thank you.
Thank you, Vita. I'm going to go now to our state representative, Chris Flanagan. Chris, take your time. Do whatever you came here to do. You're not on the clock.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. I really appreciate it. As you noted, my name is Chris Flanagan. I succeeded Tim Whalen as the first Barnstable State Representative. I think that we all felt very well-served by Tim, and I know that Tim was a big advocate for Yarmouth. And I promise you that you will have a big advocate in me. And so I've hit the ground running, just so the good people of Yarmouth know. The district is mostly all of Yarmouth with the exception of the West Yarmouth precincts of 5 and 6. I know top of mind for many of you and top of mind particularly for me is wastewater, not only mass DEPs, Title V and watershed permit regulations, but also how do municipalities pay for some, the infrastructure that's very costly. And I know that for me, the delegation and myself included are really sharpening our pencils in terms of trying to see what funding we can provide to help municipalities with wastewater infrastructure. Also, in addition to that, I've been working very closely with the AG's office on SolarWolff. And so for those Yarmouth residents, victim of the SolarWolff issue, that's something that I've been working very closely, not only with the AG's office, but the Climate Change Center, Energy Center. In addition to that, a new thing that's also recently top of mind and brought to my attention was the opioid settlement in terms of what Yarmouth will be receiving. And I will also be working with the AG's office as well as likely the Mass Department of Public Health to see what can be done in terms of increasing the contribution that Yarmouth will get out of that settlement. I also really enjoyed participating in the Coastal Resiliency Workshop at the Yarmouth Senior Center a couple weeks ago, and I believe it was directly tied to the MVP program. And certainly, I think that there are opportunities for Yarmouth to, I'm sure you all have had projects in mind, and I think for me, Cape Cod has so many projects. And MVP is a great program, but we'll typically only choose one, maybe two. And I know that the funding is competitive. So I've been talking with my colleagues who belong to the Coastal Communities Caucus in terms of garnering support to increase that program so that more projects are funded for coastal communities. I did take a tour. It was myself and state rep Kip Diggs, who also shares Yarmouth, represents the precincts of 5 and 6 in West Yarmouth, and Senator Skeer's staff. We took a tour of ME Smalls, and that's certainly a school that needs some funding in terms of, you know, that will be up to you all in terms of what that will look like. But certainly for me, my focus is really working with the Mass School Building Authority to get funding for that school. I also just want to mention that the House passed the supplemental budget. I did send you all an email just kind of outlining what was included in that, just for, very briefly, for the public's consumption. The House version does extend municipalities' ability to have meetings in a hybrid fashion over the next two years. In addition to that, there were monies provided for the school meals program and also some COVID-era-related extensions, like relating to town meeting quorum and cocktails to go. That will be taken up by the Senate on Thursday, so I'll be sure to report back what finally gets passed so that you all have a good indication of what COVID-era policies will be extended. I also want to mention that I will be having office hours in Yarmouth this Friday from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Yarmouth Senior Center. Courtney Butler, my legislative aide, is a resident of Yarmouth. She lives in South Yarmouth. She is the fiancee to a Yarmouth firefighter. So in addition to the roots that I have, actually working with the Board of Selectmen, being a Dennis Select Board member on issues relating to our schools and other areas of mutual interest, Yarmouth will certainly be well represented that way. I just wanted to share my contact information for those who might be interested in contacting me. My cell phone number is 508-789-1084. My email is christopher.flanigan@mahouse.gov. And I very much look forward to the St. Patrick's Day Parade this weekend and hope to see you all there. And one other thing I just wanted to mention, in addition to the things that I've shared that I've been working on, I definitely welcome your feedback in terms of issues facing Yarmouth and how, you know, I might be able to help. And before I forget, I also want to mention that I'll be reaching out to the Yarmouth Selectmen Chair, Vice Chair, the Tom Manager, and maybe a few others to have a sit-down meeting with Mass DOT to talk about Route 28 and Route 6A. And so with that, that's all I had on my list, but welcome any feedback, both in this meeting and also via email or phone. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. You can't do that in there in public comment. You can't get into questions for them.
Something that he said, I would like to know which entity will be dispensing those funds.
I can't hear you. Tell me what your question is. Maybe Chris can answer it.
I hope so. With respect to the opioid settlement, which entity will be dispensing the funds?
That's a great question. So we've been working with the AG's office in terms of they've identified and disclosed as part of the settlement what towns will be getting.
So they will be dispensing to each town individually?
Well, it's either will be them or the Department of Revenue potentially, or both.
State ones.
Yes.
We look forward, Chris, to having a dialogue with you and the rest of really the Cape Cod delegation as we go. I think that's one thing we can improve upon over what we did in the past. We would have a rep come in or a state senator come in, and months or even more than a year or years would go by, and there wouldn't be any real direct meetings or direct dialogue. We hope to improve upon that. And so we're very happy to hear, you know, your recognition of the issues that we are very concerned with and that affect us very deeply, and also your willingness to enter into that continual dialogue.
And, Mr. Chair, you'll likely find out that I'll be a familiar face at your meetings and plan to attend, you know, them at least quarterly, if not a little bit more. And definitely, if you want this on, you know, a conversation on the agenda, I'd gladly come before you any day.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Chris Greeley, did you have something?
Thank you. Christine Greeley, West Yarmouth. A few years ago, I served on a committee that where we looked at issues around town meeting. And a number of the things, the suggestions and things that we worked on at the time have been incorporated. So, you know, your pre-planning meeting that will be going on once you have the warrant set so that we have a lot of conversation before town meeting as opposed to doing it, and a number of other things. One of the things, however, we discussed at the time, and I think needs to really be looked at again, was the issue of using the electronic counters as opposed to, you know, sort of shouting, who can shout loudest in the room? And I say that because, and I'm not alleging, you know, fraud or anything else, but the fact of the matter is many of our town employees need to sit in the area of the voters because they're doing presentations, yet they do not live in the town. Also, people who are supporting and quite often at some petitioned articles, sit behind, and I always sit at the back end of the room, and I can hear them voting. You know what I mean? Because a lot of it is done voice vote rather than with the signals you're given. And one of the things that we talked about at the time during those meetings was that we could perhaps even do a sharing with another town, that it wouldn't have to be that we exclusively owned the electronic things. And I have heard in the news recently that I think several communities have gone and have purchased them or have engaged in them. And I'd really like us to take a look at that because I have to admit, I did have some concern after our last town meeting. I found a lot of the understanding of what we were voting on, what warrant, and if things were moved, things like that, was very difficult sort of to understand. And then I think the whole point of, you know, when you were voting on and when, also got a little bit of confusion. And I have at times, you know, had the opportunity to get appointed to be one of the vote counters and go up and down the rows while you're hoping that you're getting the vote count correct, even when people are standing with their colored cards. So that's the one thing I'd like to see us pursue perhaps a little bit further to help clarify some things at town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Tom O'Nick, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Tom Nicconello at the moment from the very historic village of Bass River. And thank you very much. I have my Chamber Commerce outfit on right now, sir. I'd like to just say that last week, one of our Board of Appeals meetings, February 23rd, it was a petition, 4995, and it was pertaining the Bass River waterfront townhouse condominiums, which we all know is right down by the bridge. And it was a wonderful petition. And just to bring it to your highlight, that back in the day before, I think it was 1984, when Captain Jolly's head fell off and float down Bass River, we are now putting Captain Jolly back on the building. And I think that's a wonderful, wonderful event for us to see Captain Jolly back on the building. He's such an iconic figure in our community. As our public artwork says on the Town Administrator's website, "The town of Yarmouth is committed to incorporate it in making public art accessible to all of the community engaging, the community while enriching public spaces and promoting civic and historical identity through visual enhancements." And Captain Jolly, by golly, is one big visual enhancement. And, you know, for our town to have the first automobile rotary in the nation is quite a thing. It used to be a horse trough. Most people back in the horse days didn't leave 10 miles from their house. That's why we have a lot of villages in New England, because we just couldn't get around. But when the automobile came around, people wanted to travel. And when people travel in their big station wagons, they wanted to see the visual effects of our beautiful country. And Route 66 was part of that, and Route 28 was part of it. Now, I hear a couple of people on our committees and boards say that we used to be honky-tonk, but I totally disagree. Art is in the eye of the beholder. We all visualize it differently. But Captain Jolly and some of these other iconic figures we've had in our community are generational. People identify our community with the visual art and the public art we display. Some of it, you know, some of it could be a little bit off, but most of it, it is, right? The elephant up the street. If that elephant was gone, I think everyone would miss it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Okay, tonight, we're going to take a first look at the warrant. I believe this is going to be scheduled for three meetings in total. Am I correct on that?
That is correct.
Three readings altogether. So we're going to go through that, and then we're going to proceed to our regular board and committee actions. And then our town administrator does have some updates, some interesting updates that we're going to talk about. And so having said that, do you want to take us through the first reading of the articles?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, just to remind folks, we scheduled this meeting special. We had ordinarily, this was going to be a week we skipped because we met last week, so that we could accommodate a first reading on the town meeting warrant. We've worked hard with all of the departments, and also the Finance Committee has been meeting at least once a week for the past couple of months, and they've worked very hard on this as well. I just want to say also that we had, you know, all of the department heads were wondering if, you know, they needed to come tonight and make presentations. Everyone's worked so hard on this. But what we felt we would do is that this was the meeting that we had sort of geared towards orienting the Board of Selectmen to what articles are here, where everything stands, and that we're hoping with the next two meetings, having additional readings of the town meeting warrants. What we'll be doing at the next meeting is having a public hearing, which will cover the budget, the school committees coming in, and we can talk a little bit more about that later, and also the capital. So all of those items, we'll have a public hearing, presentations for the board. And as we move through, we'll have some additional time, you know, that we may be able to have sponsors from some of the articles if the Selectmen have questions, scheduled for brief presentations, just to make sure that the key is that the board has all of the information that you need to formulate your recommendations, you know, on the 28th. So that'll be after the third meeting. And what we've done is to follow up on, I thought was a very successful methodology that we had adopted last year and then really honed down at the November town meeting, is rather than just come in with a list of potential articles, things we might research, we've worked with the departments to develop everything to the point where even though this is the first draft warrant, it is complete in terms of the wording, things, you know, where they stand. The only issues are that there's a number of borrowing articles, and we'll cover those one by one. We had initial drafts of the borrowing articles, and they have to go to bond counsel that, as you know, they draft the actual motions and right down to the period because they have to make that opinion to approve the debt issuance. So I'm scheduled by the end of this week to have bond councils comments. We already have town councils comments on a lot of this stuff. So by the time you get to the second reading of the warrant, I think a lot of the wording is going to be buttoned right down. And so in reviewing the warrant, again, I'm going to be going by the one that is highlighted, 3/7/20, it says 2022, it's 2023. This is the one that gave us... But that was the new one that was not in your original packet, but on the table this evening. And the only changes are some of the language is more complete, and the numbering is corrected as we added different articles and things. And on page four, we have, it's sort of the table of contents. It lists it out. There are 37 articles, and so each one is listed out what the purpose of that article is, and we can move right through them. On page six, Article One is our annual article for budget adjustments, and we have construction and demolition, the cost at the sanitation facility that needs additional funds to finish out this year. And I do point out also that while there's $250,000 going into this account to take care of the disposal of the construction and demolition, there is a much higher number that has gone into the general fund, the fees for disposing of this material at the sanitation facility. So basically, the issue is that they've exceeded what they estimated for the volume of construction and demolition material. So while they need additional funds in the budget to dispose of the material, again, the funds have already been collected, but it just goes into the general fund for the costs of the contractors leaving that material. And so this is a similar article than what we've seen in the past. And I want to call to your attention that we have the snow and ice in there, and it's at zero. And what I'm telling everyone that if it doesn't snow by March 21, we're going to cut it. So the bottom line is right now, usually we have a snow and ice deficit by this time of the year. We don't have a deficit this year. I don't think it's snowed, but once...
We haven't had any snow.
So thankful for climate change, at least for that, at least weather change. But what we'll see is if we can continue into the next draft and we don't have any snow, what you'll see is we'll delete the snow and ice, and we'll just go in with what we need. And so that's Article One. Finance Committee has recommended that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask one quick question? On most of the articles, the Finance Committee has already voted. Are those their firm votes on those?
Yes.
Okay. And so us as Selectmen would vote probably at the last reading?
The 28th.
Generally do. And sometimes what we do is, as we get into this, maybe on the second meeting, we vote some of the articles, and then maybe there's five or six we're not sure of. We vote, you know, there's a number of ways we do it. We don't always do it just at the last meeting. Sometimes we vote over the course of two meetings.
Thank you.
So that's Article One. Then Article Two moves right into the annual town budget, and it's separated out, as you know, by the general services, and then we have separate articles for all of the enterprise funds for education. And this portion of the budget, the total budget, is approximately $106,500,000. And so with the general services, we have $47,095,497. And that is detailed by account, and the Finance Committee has also recommended positively on Article Two, so that's a standard article. And from there, we, what we try to do is bunch all of the financing articles together and then take the capital articles so we can talk about if there's any questions about what relative order any of the articles in. We just follow that principle in the different groups. So you'll see Article Three.
Bob, before you go on, can, does the budget include all the new positions that we've spoken of?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And the school budget, you're not expecting an impact to...
Okay, listen to this. I was going to save this for later, but let's not save it for later because it's the elephant, you know, in the room. This is one of the most important things that we've been working on. And as you know, it's one of the reasons why we postponed the public hearing until the 21st, so we can resolve all of these issues with the new administration. It delayed the state budget, which covers the critical... with the new administration. It delayed the state budget, which covers the critical educational needs that are in the budget. So, the school committee asked to be allowed a little additional time to work with the new administration, to get the new numbers in, so that they can evaluate what impacts, if any, their budget has on the local assessments. And they've been feverishly working on that. And we received very good news that the proposed state budget came out highlighting a lot of the critical areas that were underperforming in the regional school budget places they had to increase. And so, I received an email from David Flynn, the business administrator over at the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District this afternoon. And he indicated that the, the school committee has finalized their vote on the budget, and we have those numbers in. And they fall in at, we, we had set aside 2.5% for their increase. And because of the, I think the overall school budget's going up about close to 6%, five and change, but with the additional state aid that they were hoping for, the net impact on Yarmouth in their proposed assessment is 2.58%, which is only $32,000 over what we had reserved for them. Now, I hasten to point out as well that the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School budget has come in slightly less because of the, you know, debt service and the ratios. So, between the two of them, I think we're in perfect shape. So, we'll be able to make the assessment with the money that we had set aside, with no negative impacts or additional cuts required. So, very happy to announce that. And I think it'll make this budget season go a lot smoother, as well as our public hearing. You know, I think we all held a little fear if the state budget didn't come in where we hoped. We could've been short, and, you know, we don't have a lot of extra money. So, that kind of covers the impact of the school. And I thank the school officials for, you know, being very timely with us and keeping us up to speed. So, brings us back to Article Three is the Gulf Enterprise Fund. They're in at 4,781,395. That has also been recommended positively by the Finance Committee, who, again, you know, they've been meeting for the last couple of months, and they've had detailed discussions with every single department. And I wanna thank Bill also, who's been at every one of these meetings and helped organize them and everything. I've only attended a handful of them, but thank you very much, Bill. It's been just enormous. So, that's Article Three is Gulf Enterprise Budget. And the next one, we stick with the special revenues. It's the Water Division Budget at 5,108. And, and as you can see with these articles, we have what the retained earnings and reserves are. A lot of the work's been completed already. Again, that's recommended by the Finance Committee 6O.
Bob, do you understand why the expenses have gone up so much?
Yes, there's a big, huge increase in the chemicals that are required to, to treat the water. That's really one of the, one of the biggest impacts in, in this budget. And there were a few hundred thousand dollars' worth of increases in costs to, to buy the supplies to operate the water budget. And Article Five is the Septage Enterprise Budget. Again, it's got the retained earnings balance there. And Finance Committee has recommended 6O. And we have an article, now it's kind of a new article, that's covering some of the expenses in the wastewater enterprise budget, primarily for the debt service on the design portion. It is in at 721,000. And while the wastewater enterprise has 1.655 in it, our, our overall wastewater pre-funding program is over $5 billion now, and gaining funds fast. So, we're right on target for where we had hoped to be for some of the pre-funding numbers for wastewater. And I just might add parenthetically, we had a great meeting with the SRF program indicating our timing for the borrowing for wastewater is gonna be out, probably not till 2028. So, our pre-funding program to help fund wastewater will continue for FY '24, '25, '26, '27. So, what we will be doing is significantly overperforming on the pre-funding, which will be a tremendous value to the town as we get into the wastewater and, and do the debt. And we can talk about this more when we get to wastewater. But one of those, the items that we wanna plan to do is to have a presentation to the board of selectmen on that article, whether we do it the last meeting in, in March, that sort of timeframe, and go over a lot of the details. We've been doing a tremendous amount of work refining the, the plan for financing, and things are coming together, I think, I think very well, especially with the cash flow, those issues for what we were gonna do with the first five years. I, I think that largely all those issues have been resolved. So, that's the wastewater enterprise article. So, those are all of our costs for the year for some of the wastewater debt and some engineering money. And then, that's Article Six, which is also recommended by the Finance Committee. And then Article Seven is the Cable Television Communications Budget, which allocates funds for wages and expenses for operating the town's communication division and the cable television channels. And it covers the C3 TV as well. And that is recommended by the Finance Committee 6O. Again, all of these funds are coming from the cable television fees. So, none come from property taxes or any local residents. It all comes from the fees from the cable TV contract, 100%.
Bob, can I ask why it says total wastewater enterprise funding under cable television?
Typo. That's why we go through these drafts.
Let's, let's just say cable funding.
Total cable department funding. And if you see any, anything like that, it's, it's really funny. Sometimes, you know, you get these dense documents.
Yeah.
You could read them a million times and, and just read over the same thing if it's an English word. So, thank you very much for that.
There's also up above, the word budgets cut out. You see that? Where it says total wastewater enterprise operating, then it says BU. Might wanna bring that over to the next line.
Thank you. Speak up with anything that you see. It's funny, we've got five people reading this, you know, and they, they all missed.
A lot of stuff in here.
Okay, so, that's Article Seven. It's got the Finance Committee recommendation. Now, Article Eight, we're, we're gonna redo the, the numbers. The, the certified number is gonna be approximately $32,000 higher. We just got the new numbers in this afternoon, so we didn't have a chance to change these numbers. But, and, and as you can see, the Finance Committee is awaiting, was awaiting the final number on this, too. So, they're gonna be delighted, I think, with the process, and next time around.
I wouldn't keep changing it. I'd wait, I mean, we understand that, what you just said. I'd wait till I got a hard number before I started, you know, doing a series of revisions. Once you get that hard number, we understand it's approximately 32,000 more.
And then Article Nine, we stick with the education, is the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. And that's the real number there, 4,49,674. Finance Committee recommends that. And that is the, the end of the operating budget. So, we go through all of those articles, and we have the budget. And the next series of articles are the capital budget, that, again, we'll have the public hearing on at the next meeting. And it starts, and they're also separated by the individual funding sources. The Article Ten is the Gulf Capital, and it's 140,000. And it, it's great to see that they're primarily gonna be doing capital planning, a five-year capital plan and sustainability plan for the Gulf Division. And I, I think that that goes along with a lot of the feedback that we received at some of the previous public hearings, that prior to putting forward a lot of these programs, whether it's to increase fees, whether it's to do, to do the new projects, we wanna see that detailed five-year program for growing the business. And Bill's been great working with the Gulf Department on that, and it's great to see the buy-in there. So, that's Article Ten. So, the Gulf Capital is not as high as it could be if they weren't doing the planning. And Finance Committee recommends that. Then we move into the Water Division Capital Expense, and there's a...
Mr. Administrator, excuse me, Town Manager, total for these improvements is 140, which will result from retained earnings through the Gulf Enterprise Account. I don't think that's a sentence that makes sense to me.
Let's see. Which will result, that, that, I don't like.
Total for these improvements is 140,000. I'm assuming there should be a comma, which will result, result in deductions from retained earnings through the Gulf Enterprise Account? I'm, again, I'm not sure what that, the sentence means.
I think it's which will be funded from.
Okay, so, right. Need the verb.
Yeah, that should say which will be refunded from. Which will, that'll result.
That's a good one. Thank you very much for that. All right. And it does show they have 1.669 million in that account, so that's there. Then after that, we get to Article Eleven, which is the Water Division Capital Expenses. Now, there's three articles in a row for Water Division Capital Expense. The first one is the, the various items. And as you can see, that's totaling 780,500, including kicking off their PFAS Treatment Facility Study for a permanent location treatment facility. And Article Eleven is recommended by the Finance Committee. And Article Twelve is the...
Before you go, you've got that same issue coming up in Article Eleven in the explanation.
Will be funded.
Will be funded.
Yep.
And then Article Twelve is the Route 28 Water Main, which is designed to be completed in conjunction with the wastewater system. And that is approximately five miles, five miles of line, approximate cost of 15,600,000. And that is a, a proposed bonding. So, this article is one of the articles that's at the bond counsel. They'll be tweaking the language to, to finalize it. And again, paid for from Water Department revenues. And we'll go through and read all of these explanations in detail to make sure they're grammatically And then Article Thirteen is a second bond authorization for the Phase Three Water Facilities Improvements. And it is the rehab of the pumping and treating treatment buildings, roofing, trim, HVAC. It's part, like, again, the third phase. We did Phase One and Phase Two.
That's phase?
Yeah. And, and this one is 3,300,000. And it's another bonding, designed to be paid for through the, the Water Department rates. I see in the explanations, a little typo there, two periods. So, we're gonna give this a close read all the way through. That's Article Thirteen. And then, from there, we get into Article Fourteen. It's the Septage Division Capital. And there's a chart that shows the roof replacement for the Septage Building Facility, which is, is over 25 years old. And also, the belt filter press, which is the machinery that does the de-watering of the sludge in order to allow it to be transported. And so, that, we've been studying, doing the rehab.
Does that 450 cover those, both those items?
No, there's a...
Or why is that line blank?
Well, I, I guess the belt filter press, the line rehabilitation had to go to the next line. So, it's 225,000 for the belt filter press rehab. And then the one up...
Oh, I see. So, it's called a belt filter press rehabilitation?
Correct.
Okay, so that should all be on one line?
Yeah, but it was one of those things like budget. It was too long, and it was getting cut off, so we had to...
Okay.
Separate line there. And, and it's a rehab, because the de-watering function was, was there. But I guess after 25 years, the machinery doesn't work anymore, so they have to rebuild it. And, and again, that's the, it's the de-watering function of the treated septage sludge.
Okay, you said, okay.
And point out, it, it shows that there's a 4.87 million dollar reserve balance in the Septage Facility, which has been, you know, operating, you know, at a, at a very good clip. They take septage from, from all of the towns around us. So, that's why there's a, there's a balance in that account. So, it should be no problem making these improvements. And, and again, I would just add that as part of the wastewater design, they did a complete and thorough analysis of the Septage Facility, you know, because of its age, 25-plus years, to determine whether it was feasible to continue to operate that facility. And, you know, they've determined with the need for rehab on some of these things, like the, you know, the filter presses and the roof, and there's, there's, there's other rehabs that need be doing, that the, the bones of the facility are strong, and that that facility can continue operating as it has been for an indefinite period of time. So, they, they made a determination that, you know, to keep, keep the Septage Plant running, and it would be economical to do so, much more so than if we had to take it offline and build it into the new wastewater treatment facility. The cost would be higher. So, it's just a side note.
When you have that kind of money in an account, enterprise account, the interest that it's drawing, does that stay in there, too, or does that go somewhere else?
I'm pretty sure that the interest accrues to the general fund.
Oh.
Which is one of the benefits of having a regional type of facility. Okay, and then that's Article Fourteen. Article Fifteen is the Fire Department Capital Expense. And these are funded through the ambulance fund, total of 460,000. Again, this has been through the capital program, and it's recommended by the Finance Committee.
The forestry vehicle, was that paid with a grant? Wasn't there a grant of some kind?
I think there is one for about a half a million dollars.
Okay.
According to CIP.
So, so we approved there, we, we approved the grant for one, and I, I think this is the second forestry vehicle, if I'm not mistaken. That, that one, we got through the grant, and then, and then this one is a...
Right, yep.
Second replacement, a little bit smaller of a vehicle. The big boy, they got through the federal grant.
What's the payment to stabilization?
That is a...
Is that a repayment of the loan for that truck that they bought? No?
Engine 42, which was purchased in 2021.
Kind of self-borrowed on that, right?
Correct.
Is that the payment, the repayment?
Repayment to the stabilization, for the borrowing from stabilization to purchase the Engine 42.
How much is left on that loan?
I'm pretty sure this, no, that... I'm pretty sure this, no, this doesn't wrap it up, but the amount they, I have to check that.
I'm just curious. It was, I know it was a big expense.
I have to check.
And I know that they saved a lot of interest by just borrowing internally from that account, which was a pretty good move.
How much money do they keep in the stabilization fund?
Let's see if I have a, do I have a number on that? I don't need it right away, I was just curious. I'll double-check that, too.
Bob, on the radios being purchased, are they all compatible with the existing police radios? So if there's an emergency, everything will link together nicely?
Yes, I think that's the idea. They're modernizing the radios so that they all talk together.
Excellent. Thank you.
I'm just getting some notes. Engine forty-two, one, two. All right, that's Article 15. And then Article 16 is the capital expense for the various town departments. The list is evaluated, and it is prioritized in order by the Capital Committee, and there is, this is the so-called free cash one, and I just want to call it to your attention that there's three point two one million in here for the free cash for all of the town's capital needs, and there is additionally that one point one million that we've restored to the property tax levy that originally was a capital exclusion.
It was for roads, it was to keep the roads in a-
And it's for the road maintenance.
Yeah.
And what had happened is, in the COVID period, with the uncertainty over the revenues, road money was taken out and was paid for out of free cash. And what we did last year, and we hope to make that this is a permanent change, is to restore those funds to the property tax levy, so that we're funding the roadway improvements at one point one of the original capital exclusion that was voted by the town. It was an override for road maintenance, and so we've got that back in, and it's listed out. We've actually added a little free cash to it, so we're putting in one million four, but that one point one was voted as an override, so we kept that amount in the levy.
Bob, on Article 16, number twelve, training comes under capital? Is it because of the amount for training?
Yeah, where it's with the IT Department, Bill, what did Capital say about having the cybersecurity training in there?
They didn't seem to have a problem with it. Sometimes that when they see something that's new, but it's needed, they'll move it forward and say, "Don't bring that back again. It's not really as much capital." It fits within the ten thousand dollar limit.
So-
Look at it as part of an overall program. There are the IT things that were in capital, I think. What they don't like in free cash is reoccurring items, that is, things that you would buy every single year because free cash is not reliable. They'd rather that go to the general fund.
Bob?
This is a one-time shot, then?
I would think so.
Yeah, and if there's future training that has to be ongoing, that will go in the operating budget. So I think that there was some equipment that had to be purchased, plus we had to do training to, the whole system of cybersecurity has been revolutionized in the last couple of years with the, you know, we had to purchase and install the two-factor authentication, and there's just a lot of investment there, and I think that they snuck in the training on the whole system as a one-time shot under capital. And so we're happy to put it in there for this year, but ongoing training, that type of thing, that doesn't come under capital. That goes right in the operating budget.
Did they have something in their policy statement about that? Like, they could do it if it wasn't over ten K?
Not this year. A lot of the, hang on here, a lot of the policy statements they were making is about, sort of, in free cash, don't repeat items.
Right.
Sometimes what they do, though, is if they see a relationship between that training, as Bob was indicating, and another project, that they would put it in free cash. But it rated, I'm trying to look it up on the profile sheets, but it rated pretty well in terms of the-
Prioritization?
Yeah. I mean, as Bob had indicated earlier, this is sequenced by rating. So the top ones got the top score around four, and so on and so forth. Scores go from zero to four. There are two ratings. There is readiness, and then significance. So, I mean, I can find the profile sheet, and as we go along, get you more detail on that one.
Okay. And I hope board members also have the, and we'll make sure that you do it, if you don't already for the public hearing. The detailed capital improvement program is fundamentally different than anything that you've ever seen in this town, and it's one of Bill's big projects for the year. He's really done a tremendous job, and the part that I think is enormously helpful is every single one of these projects has what Bill's referring to as a profile sheet, which has the details on what is it, why is it, what does it cost, and so it's, and we've got that up on the website, too, so anyone at home can, you know, go through the capital and find the detail on every single one of these, even has pictures and things of that nature. Do you have another question?
Yes, sir. Ten, nineteen, twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-one, it's all replaced. I know we've had issues in the past where items have been replaced but remain in service. We need to make sure, in fact, that they're going to go away. Traded in, scrapped, whatever.
We're doing a good job on that, too. This idea of having, you know, McHale's Navy, or, you know, what I want to call it, all of the ragtag cars that we keep after their useful life, they're very costly and very inefficient. So we're working with the departments to try to get efficient vehicles to replace the old ones and to trade in the old ones, and so I think-
I realize it's a mechanical thing, but it has been an issue that's come up a couple of times. I felt I'd be remiss if I didn't at least say something.
And on that subject, coming up Forest Road, unfortunately, I didn't get a number for the vehicle, but in the, I was driving the bus, coming up behind this vehicle on Forest Road that was letting off so much exhaust that you literally couldn't see. It looked like we had just entered a deep fog. So you might want to take a look at that particular-
Town sticker on that thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bob, on the police cruisers, what distinguishes number one from the next articles? Are we not leasing these particular ones versus the next ones?
Awesome question. This is one of the changes that we just made, and we're working closely with the chief in the department. And what the issue is, is that we have that great new program. It's a ten-year program to replace the police cruisers, rather than, you know, they used to do this thing where, like, every three years, we would have five hundred thousand, and then it would go down to zero, and then five hundred thousand. Very difficult to manage. And so what we've done is, we've worked with Capital, and Bill's done a great job on this too, and the Police Department, and created this ten-year program, which will be rolling leases. And the leases are at the end of their useful life, then they're traded in, and a new lease takes their place. And so it's all designed to get about four to six cars into the lease program, and then it's, it's only a four-year lease, but it's over a ten-year program. So it's staggered. You start one, and then you put in the second lease, and you put in the third, and then the whole thing starts over again, so that you have stable investment over a period of time, just to maintain the fleet where you need it. So what you see in here is the staggered leasing. Last year, we did the first cruiser lease, and it came in at the eighty-eight thousand a year, and so this is the second of a four-year lease program for the purchase of the cruisers, and that's the number one item, eighty-eight, eight-two-one. Now, the second inception is reflected in Article seventeen, Police Cruiser Financing. When you initiate a new lease, this is the second lease, of the second tranche of vehicles, it's like a borrowing. You have to have permission to do a four-year lease, so it has to be a separate vote, and it's a two-thirds vote. And the funds, once you approve that two-thirds vote to do the four-year lease, then it's only a majority vote to keep the payments going for years two, three, and four. So for that reason, the difference in the two-thirds and the majority vote, we have to split out the new lease from the old lease. So in Article sixteen, we have the old lease. Article seventeen, we have the new lease, and they both stack onto each other, and it totals about a hundred and ninety-two thousand or so. That's the total cruiser price for the year. But that's just a little explanation of why we have two articles. Instead of just putting them right together, one after another, it's because of the voting.
When we first started this program, the purchase price for six vehicles was four hundred and forty thousand, so the CIP Committee was asking, "How can you spread that out so you're not getting hit," you know, in that sort of cycle, and this is what they came up with, so.
So instead of forty-four, four hundred and forty thousand, you know, every couple of years, we go a hundred and ninety every year. Stays even.
I noticed on this Finance Committee vote, most of the votes we've looked at are six-zero votes. This is a four-zero. Was this, is that a misprint, or was that a night when they only had four members?
They haven't seen seventeen, twenty-one, and twenty-five since the last time they met, last week. There are a few changes, so they'll pick these up at their next meeting. And then they still have to vote on everything.
So they did not vote seventeen?
No, because that was new since their last meeting.
But, one thing I'd point out, when we went in front of the Finance Committee-
We talked about it.
We had the total amount in Article sixteen.
Yeah.
It was, both amounts were right there, and we talked about, at that time, listen, we might have to split this out, and they voted Article sixteen with the larger amount, six-oh, but since that time, we wrote seventeen, and it should say zero-zero. It shouldn't say four. They didn't vote four.
Yeah, so they haven't done that one yet, so we're just zero-zero. Okay.
And they voted, they-
What was the other articles that weren't voted, Bill?
Seventeen, twenty-one, and twenty-five, and then they stopped at-
Twenty-one and twenty-five, hold on a second. Let me mark those. Twenty, okay, twenty-one is zero-zero, and twenty-five-
The active shooter training. And then they stopped at twenty-eight at their last meeting, which they were intending on picking up, which is the tourism revenue. The line items are now filled in, and then they-
So their last vote was twenty-eight?
Yeah, number twenty-eight. It was another number before, but, yeah. So they'll be, they have a meeting tomorrow night, and hopefully wrapping up those votes. And one of the things that they were concerned about was the schools, but now that that number's come in within acceptable range, they can finish off their votes.
Okay.
That clarifies that. Thank you.
So that is Article sixteen, and then we talked about Article seventeen. Again, that's the new lease. Interesting, though, in a short period of time now, the vehicle prices continue to increase. Let's hope things with Detroit simmer down. There's been a lot of, you can see the cruiser, and again, that amount is wrong, the eighty-eight, twenty-one, that's the old amount, that's going to be, so we went up in a period of two years from eighty-eight on the cruiser lease to ninety-six. So it's going to be ninety-six, nine, seven, three. And if you can find the cars, that's another thing. They're waiting quite some time for vehicles. So that's Article seventeen with the police. And then Article eighteen is the funds for Phase One for wastewater, two hundred and seven million, two hundred and forty-four thousand. And it's a long article that is up at Bond Council, and so they're going to hone that down. Our thing's, we just need to make sure that we satisfy all of the state infrastructure bonding rules, but also all of the state revolving loan fund, any particular items that they have, they have to approve it as well, because, again, the financing for this program is going to be, we anticipate a hundred percent through the Clean Energy Trust, which will enable the town, and we did confirm that we are eligible to receive for this entire project, zero percent financing. And so we had a great meeting with the Clean Water Trust folks last week, and I had, you know, some concerns over, you know, that they had the draft intended use plan that designated the town of Yarmouth the number one highest priority for wastewater projects in the Commonwealth. But they associated the project with a reserve of fifty million, and obviously, it's a two hundred and seven million dollar program. And so they explained to us how that happens, is that they only commit a maximum first-year projects of fifty million, and they find that this is the actual amount that is borrowed by the town and financed, that in the first year, usually in the construction period, and towns don't borrow, they just borrow interim, which we'll be doing. So we'll technically not have borrowed anything in the first year of this program. And what they say is, once they finalize this intended use plan, which they will be finalizing it, I guess over the summer, then even though the first year amount of fifty million is reserved, we're not going to use that fifty million, and we're locked in for the whole program. So what that means is, if they finalize this intended use plan with us right where we are, that makes us eligible for the zero percent for the entire project, and commits them to the entire project, so.
Entire project being Phase One.
Entire project, Phase One. So it's, at this point, we're in for the two hundred and seven million, Phase One.
And they'll loan all of that?
No, what?
They will loan all of that at zero?
They will loan all of that at zero.
Have any idea how much money we're saving with that?
I do.
It's about six million, I think.
Yeah, six to seven million?
That was, I ran that a while ago, but it's more than six million, probably.
Now, we're going to do a full presentation on this article.
Yes.
Do you have a date that you want to try to do that on?
Yes. We're looking at the twenty-eighth, and it's possible to do it the twenty-first. I just thought that, looking at the agenda, the twenty-eighth, we had a little extra time. The twenty-fifth, we have the public hearing on the budget and the capital plan as well. So we didn't want to-
Yeah, we don't want to cram it in. We want to have the time to go through that. So I would rather wait till the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, and there's a lot of information. You know, there's the big picture, the overall costs, and we've got that program with the, you know, ten or twelve different funding sources, but, you know, there's also, what is it going to cost me?
Right.
You know, the average cost for, this is for a homeowner, this is the, we've also calculated out that it'll be roughly eight to ten thousand dollars for the connection fees in addition to the cost of the construction of the system, and then there's the new, the renamed septic loan program is the Aquafund now, that is going to be extended to help- going to be extended to help have low-interest loans for the actual connections to the system too. So there's a lot of information, a lot of things coming through.
So we'll get all that on that night?
Yes. And hopefully, any questions anyone has, it'll, I think it'll be a good dry run for us, you know, as well, to prepare for the town meeting and answer anyone's questions that folks might have. I think the financing program is coming together very, very clearly now. And, you know, one of the last big pieces was, you know, to really hone down some of the financing requirements of the SRF. And I think I might mention this, we received some very good news when we met with the SRF on how they factor in their temporary borrowing, which they allow us up to three years temporary borrowing, which would be like a bond anticipation note. And during that period, there's no principal payment, right? It's on the temporary note. And where we're zero percent, there's also no interest, and there's no interest accruing. So they enable you to do the full construction before converting it to their loan, and that, you know, answers the town's issues with that first five years of building up that revenue. So after the first three years, when they bond it, first year of your bonding, which they go out and they get the tax-exempt issuance from the bank, there is also no principal payment during the first year of your borrowing. That would be a situation where, you know, usually at six months, right, they put in an interest payment. And then, and a year later, they put in a principal payment. So where we have no interest, we get that fourth year with no principal payment. So what that basically does is it pushes out our borrowing another approximately two years, which enables us to do two things that are going to be extremely, I think, important for the town in financing this whole thing. I mentioned this a little earlier. Number one, it allows us to collect our pre-funding for those four years, and things such as every year, we put over a million dollars aside from the short-term rental tax, six-hundred-thousand or so from the WIF, that was the one percent. So all of these funds, we have a much larger pre-funding component, and it pushes out that principal payment. So, you know, the first four years, that's the period, we get the construction done. By the time we start paying the debt, we have the revenues coming in to support that. So the key thing was whether we would have to take out additional loans to cover that initial period. And working with the program, their rules enable us to do exactly what we were looking for. So we can show you the chart of how that works. Remember the last time we looked at the chart? You know, we had it set out, after five years or so, we're collecting enough revenue to start meeting our debt service. But for that first five years, you know, how are we going to ramp up? And that's, we figured that nut out, is we're going to ramp up through the temporary borrowing allowances from the state revolving loan program that I think will be beneficial for the town. But we're going to look forward to, just going over the big picture, small picture, every bit of the picture. It looks like wastewater's time in Yarmouth is now, and that we, you know, we're the highest priority town in the state. We were looking at, in fact, what are the towns of our size in New England don't have any wastewater? There's not a lot of them. I think we're one of the last holdouts. And, you know, we're finding from a water quality standpoint, you know, that we need this for the future of this town, for the next generation, that this is the generation that needs to start that cleanup in. So I'm happy to say that the financing looks like it's coming together. It's a very expensive project, a lot of moving parts, but it appears all very feasible to me to implement Phase One and be able to be in a positive place to roll into Phase Two and Three. And that'll cover us, I think, probably for the next ten to fifteen years. And then, you know, we'll have to start, continue the planning for Phase Four, which will be, you know, another, another big step. You know, right now, we're planning for Phase One, Two, and Three. Phase Four will take us into the realm where we'll need a plant expansion, so it'll be another big nut. But I think Phase One, Two, and Three will be definitely doable.
So you've had a subgroup working on the publicity part of this. Will they be there on the twenty-eighth also?
Yes.
Great. Can we get a presentation on the scheduling, too? I know DOT has its issues now, and are we going in November? Can you have them lay that out for us so that we know exactly what we're talking about?
Well, as Bob was indicating earlier, the advantage is, one of the plants being built for Phases One through Three, so the sooner we bring on Two and Three, the sooner you bring on revenue that's attached to the expense. So Phase Four, you get into a new plant expansion, so that's another sort of iteration. But the advantage is, bring on Phase Two and Three after this in five-year increments, and you're starting to bring in the betterment revenue and the capital surcharge revenue to something that's already part of the expense.
Bob keeps referring to public comments, I think, during the next meetings and what have you. What exactly does that mean? I mean, does it really mean public participation from the public? Or are we going to also possibly have the same kind of session where the public, only the public was supposed to, you know, pose their issues?
Ms. Morris, can you go to the microphone, please?
I wonder what public comment means throughout these upcoming meetings. I mean, does it public participation? I mean, I would very much like to have the same kind of.
There's going to be public input on the budget hearing, in general, the entire budget, correct?
Yes.
And what date do we have on that?
March twenty-one is public hearing on the budget, and the capital and the school budget. So that'll be a public hearing, the public will be able to.
And the entire budget, and the public can ask questions.
Okay. And then after that, you will not have the same session that you did last year, where it was just for the public.
Like a preview, you mean?
Well, express concerns at that, get questions answered, so that the town meeting can move along much faster than, you know, normally. Remember, you had a session like that last year?
April four.
April four, though?
That's a tentatively scheduled town meeting. It's called the Town Meeting Preview, and anyone can ask any questions. We're going to go through the articles.
The fourth.
Thank you.
We'll get to that when we do the calendar a little bit later on. I have a couple of questions. So what year are we going to actually start paying back this money? In year what?
Twenty-eight, FY twenty-eight.
FY twenty-eight be our first payment? And what's the term of the financing?
Thirty years.
Thirty? Okay. So FY twenty-eight is first payment on a thirty-year note, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So by then, you probably have about nineteen million accrued by twenty-eight, based on the ARPA funding and all the revenue that's coming in from the other sources.
Which is twice what our original hope was for, you know, we had hoped to put aside nine million so that we could pre-fund. And if we bounce this thing out with zero percent interest till twenty-eight, if we have nineteen million, you know, those funds will be instrumental in helping us ramp into Phase Two. Right? So if we have extra money in the bank, we'll have Phase Two pre-funded as well.
But that money's also going to be used to make the payments, right, once they start?
Correct.
Nineteen million, right?
Right, but we don't need all of it.
We'll have some left for Phase Two.
Correct, correct, for the pre-funding. So we have, our pre-funding program starts with Phase One pre-funding, and then it rolls into, after five years, Phase Two pre-funding. And, you know, hopefully, that'll help with, one of the things that we're noticing is that the costs that we have are still two-thousand-twenty-three costs. And on Phase Two, you know, one of the concerns we have moving forward, but we need to get, without Phase One, there is no Phase Two. But, you know, there is potential cost escalation, that same cost escalation that we've seen on the Phase One costs. You know, it looks like those types of construction escalation on Phase Two, you know, if we're in two-thousand-and-thirty or, you know, beyond, what exactly are the costs going to be, you know? So there's still an element of planning to the actual Phase Two and Phase Three costs. But Phase One, we have nailed.
We know what's going to be available to us in funding in Phases Two and Three, in the sense of, are we going to still be eligible for interest-free loans, or do we not know that yet?
We anticipate, that we hope that that might be the case, but those decisions haven't been made by the state.
They haven't. Okay.
And there will be a lead time that will, you know, they'll have the new laws. In fact, you know, we hope that wastewater financing starts to gain some traction. I'll be perfectly honest with you, I think the overall funding from the state and the federal government has been a little lean. And one of the things that we're looking at doing is seeing if, you know, that can be enhanced. So issues that we're looking at in Phase Two very, very closely, we want to make sure that we get the zero percent financing. That'll be critical to us. And we're also hoping that we get initial, you know, additional funds, the, for example, the Cape Cod Water Protection Fund, you know, that needs a new, you know, just funding for that program, because, you know, it's not, there's not going to be enough money in there for twenty-five percent on some of these future phases. Yes, sir.
Zero percent financing, is that just for the initial development and construction? Then it goes into a regular municipal funding? I mean, like bond funding, which would obviously carry an interest rate?
No. The, see, the, it's like a bond bank, right? The Clean Water Trust, and they, the state issues its own securities, and they subsidize the interest rate down on it through all of the appropriations and a lot of the federal, you know, clean water money. So what we do is, the bank to us is the Clean Water Trust, they are the issuer, and they sign the loan agreements with us. So what we sign on to is a thirty-year note to the trust, that's who we owe the money to, for the zero percent. So it doesn't convert into anything.
Right. So our bond for thirty years is zero percent, so obviously, we're not going to have any interest payments, we'll just have a principal payment.
Correct.
And our good friends at the state are paying the investor the interest rate to make it worthwhile for them to buy the bond.
Exactly, exactly. That's the whole bond bank scenario with the Clean Water Trust, how they operate.
Can I get some of that myself?
You know, I wish, and, you know, we crab, I just want to say.
You might need it, before DEP gets done with you.
For any of the state officials that are out there listening to us, angry, and we were really clear with the DEP, we, you know, need help from our partners. These wastewater projects are too big for any individual town to handle on their own. It's just beyond the scope of our ability.
No question.
But I'll tell you this, the state revolving fund, even though we're asking for additional money to make it, and what we're doing, I mean, the town, local government is, all of our efforts are geared towards making this affordable, right? As affordable as possible for the everyday citizen in our town. And that's why we're fighting for these extra funds. But people need to know that that Clean Water Trust and the state revolving loan fund is a very powerful, powerful engine. And to get two-hundred million for thirty years at zero percent, there is not a program like that anywhere. And it's like, go try to buy a house and get a zero percent mortgage. It's just, you know, it's only for these public purposes that you get that.
Tangentially, have you gotten any notice that the state may want us to partner with some of the local towns again? Or has that not come up at all?
No, the, I have personally had discussions with the DEP on that, not the Clean Water Trust end of it. They've accepted our application, and they're acting on its face. Now, through the discussions that we've had regarding the proposed DEP regulations that identify the highly sensitive nitrogen-loaded embayments, you know, they're concerned about the watershed-based strategies. And I think that they're, they understand, and they have been supportive of, our viewpoint is that with nothing done, just starting complete from scratch, right? The needs of the towns are so big that it's very difficult to, what we found, right, to get this regional partnership off the ground everyone at once. And our neighbors, you know, we work very closely with the town of Dennis, they're not at the same point we are. They're a little bit behind, and they need a little more time. And I think it's our feeling, and I think that the DEP generally agrees, that for us, we have an eight-phase program, starting off with Phase One, and getting that plant in the ground, and getting some of this environmental work done, makes us a much better potential regional partner to hit these watersheds together. So the idea is, at its own pace, each town gets started, and that when we each have a system, that a little bit of our legs underneath us on how to treat wastewater, there is a tremendous amount of increased need for expanding as we move forward, that's the time. And I'll just tell you myself personally, and I think, again, DEP generally agrees, I'm convinced that as we move forward, once we get through this phase, there will be a time where we'll combine our efforts. It's just too costly for every individual town to develop, you know, these treatment plants to handle the, and at some point, we're just building a small one now, but as they increase in size, I personally feel we're going to bring on the neighboring town, and both towns will wind up saving millions doing that. It's just, you know, we need to get things started in this vein. And I think also, having that phased program is another very powerful way to do that. Keep in mind, we're just doing Phase One now, but once we start with Phase One, I think it'll open up a lot of opportunities. And potentially, don't forget that we've also had discussions with Barnstable, who is an extremely active partner in their own wastewater planning. And, you know, we've discussed issues with them, potential, what parts of our towns can we share services with Barnstable as well? And it's another area. When you're out there and you have nothing, and you haven't started, you have no ability, it's very difficult to jump in with another town and make progress. But when we, you know, it's kind of, Barnstable's a little ahead of us, we're a little ahead of Dennis, but in a matter of a few short years, I think we're going to see a lot of conversions.
Very good. Thank you.
So Article eighteen is the big appropriation, and we had a lot more discussion between now and when you make your recommendation on that. And you'll see the wording tighten up as the bond councils look at it. I would like to even have them have the motion. So we may wind up, you know how you do that? We'll put the motion right in, because they like us to read the motion. And I personally don't like when you're reading the motion and it's a little different than what's printed in the warrant. You know, I like if you're going to read something, print it right out so everybody can read along with you. So we're going to work on that, getting that set. So that's eighteen. Article nineteen is the DIF Phase Two financing. And this is where it follows up on the vote of last April twenty-sixth, and really establishes the details of the DIF.
Bob, could I point out that for the public that might be listening, sometimes it might be wise to give the full, instead of just saying "DIF," people might not know what you're talking about?
You know, thank you for, you're not the first person that has said that, that we go to these meetings. I think I'm on meeting million-point-seven for wastewater meetings. I mean, that, we go to these meetings, I think I'm on meeting million point seven for wastewater meetings. And we throw around these acronyms. You know, D E P, DIF, and all, all the, the DIF, for anyone who's listening, is called the District Improvement Financing. And it is a form of financing that we're going to use to capture the new development in the Phase One area. And, uh, any new development in that area, the revenues from property taxes from the new part of that development go into a special fund that we use to pay for the debt for the wastewater that created the demand for the, for the new development. And it's a, a very good way of using property tax revenue that is new and created by the infrastructure to pay for the infrastructure and not have a general property tax increase. And folks should know that, that this Phase One does not have a property tax increase. Residents will pay zero property taxes for the Phase One unless you are in that district. And it's only the increased value from your new growth or new development in that district that goes into a special fund and that helps defray the cost of the infrastructure. And, and that's really one of the, um, the core philosophies of this Phase One financing is that we're trying to avoid taxing people that are not part of the phase for this Phase One. Folks in other phases will get their chance to pitch in as we expand the system and it goes by their homes. And, um, al- also hopefully without a property tax general increase that we're, we're trying to gear towards the users and, and I think the model we have works. So that's, when we say DIF, it's the District Improvement Financing. It uses revenues from that district to pay off the infrastructure.
I think, you know, Dawkins' point is well taken. And I think the easiest answer to that is the first time you use the term, write it out, District Improvement Financing. And then parentheses, capital D, capital I, capital F, close parentheses. So then when people see the word DIF later on, they can clearly just refer back to that first entry and they can see what it stands for. That's how they do it in legal writing and it's, it's very easy to follow.
Yeah, makes good sense.
Also your grammar lessons in high school.
So just, you know, all those terms, D E P, write it out the first time, then in parentheses, put the acronym. And I think you'll be fine.
I agree.
And, and again, we'd be remiss talking about the District Improvement Financing without, once again, just recognizing Bill Scott, who brought that concept of financing it from the, the revenues in the district to us and has just done such a tremendous amount of work to prepare this whole District Improvement Financing proposal, cross every T, dot every I. It's really a tremendous piece of work. And, um, I, I don't think that there's anyone on Cape Cod that's really that zoned into the state-of-the-art on this, so.
The revenues that we've been able to look at, we work with the assessor, are very conservative. One of the things about when you define new growth under a DIF, it is not market increase. Uh, it is not personal property. So, uh, the easiest way to explain it is, it has to be something new to the property. So that's why-
Physical improvements.
Physical improvement, but even beyond that, if you're replacing windows and fixing the lobby or upgrading, it doesn't count in the DIF. It has to be something new. So the DIF has a very conservative use of the term new growth. And so it's not really taking market increases and other rehabilitation increases out of the tax rolls. It's just taking those new projects. And the, the theory on the DIF is if you don't have sewer, you don't have the new projects, so you don't have the revenue, so you wouldn't have anticipated it anyway.
And it's not an additional tax, it's just an allocation.
It's just pulling the new growth out.
Additional tax, right?
Thing that happens with a DIF is even though you set the numbers at X now, if there's new growth that is not in the report, that's still counted. So typically, when you see an infrastructure improvement like this, your DIF numbers go up because when we sat down with several property owners, some of them said, "I, I'd rather not tell you what the numbers are now, it's too soon." And, but they were talking about new projects. So, we anticipate the numbers we see now are going to go up as they see sewer. I mean, they want to see the sewer line in front before they start spending money on the property. So a lot of the things that happen in a DIF is you won't see growth in the beginning. Your, our numbers are like 83,000 in 2024, you know, 2033, 428,000. Then with a few, uh, larger projects, it stabilizes at, uh, half a million a year for a total of about 5% of the project cost, about $11 million. So, it's a good funding source because it's painless in terms of it doesn't hurt the property owner. Really doesn't hurt the town because it's not a tax for the property owner. And it doesn't hurt the town because if you've seen the growth in commercial over the past 20 years, it's gone from, uh, you know, residential at 85% of the levy, now it has 91% of the levy. So sewer is going to be the answer to change that pattern.
So that-
Yeah, there won't be much revitalization on 28 without wastewater treatment.
Correct.
Won't happen.
So that's Article 19. That is for the financing of the wastewater District Improvement Financing. And Article 20 are for the easements that are necessary for wastewater Phase One. Primarily, uh, there, there's not a lot of easements associated with this. There's, you know, potentially for the pump stations and things, but, um, mostly the construction is going to be in the right of way. And, um, there are some temporary right-of-entry sort of permits that aren't really easements. So, um, we don't anticipate easements to be huge, but we need to be covered with them. In fact, um, we're checking with bond council. We may incorporate the easement language into the borrowing article if that's possible. They're looking at, at that. But we need to be covered for, um, these easements. And that's Article 20.
So you can do those without being site-specific? You're just getting like a blanket approval from town meeting?
There is an easement plan that is published, so-
All right, I haven't seen that.
And, and, and so dated March-
What's the significance of that street address on that easement plan? You know?
It's the pump station, right?
Well, it says Pump Station 2 and then it gives an address of 316 Route 28.
That's the address for the pump station proposed?
So these easements are defined in that plan?
Correct.
That we'll be authorizing the town to take?
Yes.
Oh, that, the, the town meeting will be authorizing us to take? Okay.
And I, I know the, the D P W has already been in contact with property owners and regarding that.
And that plan, apparently, it says copies are on file with the town clerk.
And it will be. So I don't think they're on-
I'd like to see it when it's, when we have it.
But, yeah, we should bring those in and, and show you-
It says dated comma 2010. Is that date? Did I miss print?
I don't think so. I, I think that's when they drew the plan up.
The plan's that old?
Wow, the easement plan.
I believe that this is the location of the old dress shop.
I believe it is too. I believe it is too.
And, and I believe that's when the town took, took the property or purchased the property.
They did, they were going to use it for a pump station originally.
So, smart, sticking to the plan.
Yeah, okay.
Now, Article 21 is in there to hold a space. We may not need another article for the Higgins-Croll Road should-use pad, utility easements. But, um, we, we had the article and we're researching with town council right now as to whether those were already approved. But we know we need some utility easements to finish up that Phase Three. So I'm working with, um, Jeff Colby, Town Council, just to clarify what we need exactly there.
In that, would that be going, Bob, from, uh, the police station then up to Buck Island?
I think so, yeah, yep. There's nine permanent easements. East side of Higgins-Croll Road between Chickadee Lane and Horse Pond Conservation Trails parking area. So, well, that's, um, still being finalized. Then we move into Article 22 is the reconstruction of that sanitation, construction and demolition pad, which, as you can see, is getting a fair amount of use. It is, um, over 20 years old and it just, you know, it's a concrete pad where they dumped the, contractors dumped the material and it separated out. And in order to keep, um, the level of operations up there, that pad needs to be fixed. And that is going to be funded from the sanitation. And, and there's another, it says, there's a typo there, septage, it says, should be sanitation. And that's a borrowing to, um, 1.4 million, link it up with their fees, so it'll be covered by the fees. And similarly, to drive around on their brand-new construction demolition pad, they're going to need to replace their loader, which, um, is probably a $350,000 loader. It's a kind of a big one up there. And, um, front-end loader for pushing around the demolition debris. And that's also going to be a lease. So there's a three-year lease for 110,000 a year for the sanitation loader. That's Article 23. Article 24 is our, our standard, um, article to transfer funds for wage and salary adjustments as a result of settling collective bargaining agreements. And we have collective bargaining ongoing. We're starting up, there's the, um, new contract for the police department that will be coming up.
Is that figure at this point like a placeholder figure?
Yes.
Pretty much, because these, there's contracts that aren't finalized, correct?
Yes, exactly. And Article 25 is the Board of Selectmen had asked to see after the report from the police department, the active shooter training. And there's an explanation on there, transferring the sum of 145,000 to, um, work with the police department and the fire department. And they also have, um, some regional training involved, I believe. So that's active shooters, number 25. And Article 26, now this is one, I looked at this and, and I, I think I might, um, benefit from moving Article 26 back with the wastewater articles. So we go wastewater, DIF, and then, um, Article 26 is a local adoption statute. And we talked about this a little bit before. It is Mass. General Laws, Chapter 83, Section 15. Now, we know in Phase One, there's a small part of the project, not that small, but it's less than 20%. Between 15 and 20% is going to be, um, betterment revenues for the properties that are bettered as a result of the installation of the wastewater lines. Now, the state law that you adopt betterments says that anytime you, you do a betterment, it's a 5% interest. And in our case, and, and that's designed to, to match, you know, slightly above usually what the bonding rates are, where we have this 0% financing, we're going to take advantage of this local adoption statute, which enables the town to lower the interest rate to local residents who receive betterments from 5% to 2%, whatever the town borrows at. 2% above that. So what that would mean, if we're borrowing at 0%, we can lower the betterment interest for folks from 5% down to 2%. And it's a very powerful tool. It couples with the local adoption that the town did at the last town meeting, if you recall. Normal betterments can only go for a local resident up to 20 years. Now, we've adopted the statute that enables the Board of Selectmen to adopt betterments up to 30 years because we have a 30-year payment program. And, um, so it's, there's no problem allowing people 30 years to pay back instead of 20. Now, coupled with this low interest rate, so what, what we're talking about essentially for betterments is a 30-year program with only 2%, which is far, I, I, I think, um, better than any type of financing that's available in commercial markets by a lot.
Nice.
Yes, sir.
With an issue-
40% reduction over what the normal rate would be.
Absolutely, yep.
40% of it.
With, with, I lost my train of thought, terrible. With the issuance of a quick claim deed, is that betterment have to be paid in full? Or is it assumable by the new buyer?
It's assumable by, assumable, excuse me, by the new buyer. So it does not have to be, um, paid off when you sell your property. It can go with the property. So it's another beautiful part about the, um, about the betterments. It's, they're, they're allowed to, to change with the property and it stays on the property tax bill and, um-
That would be negotiable between the parties, the buyers and seller. But my guess is the customary practice probably will play out, like you said, where somebody will say, "I've owned the property for 15 years, I'm selling it to you. You have to pick up the next 15 years of it." But you might find situations where, and again, depending on the price you're willing to pay and other concessions, where the owner may decide to pay off the balance of the betterment.
Yeah, I, I've, I've seen it, seen it go both ways.
Yeah, yeah.
Bob, can I ask who made the decision to do, to go from five to two? I mean, I don't remember us talking about this before.
The, um, good point, that where the suggestion to adopt this Chapter 15(c) came in the report that we received from the Collins Center. We, we enlisted the University of Massachusetts Ed Collins Center, which is a consulting arm of the University of Massachusetts. They help with municipal finance issues with the, the town governments. And we enlisted them to analyze our betterment structure, just to make sure that we were making the best decisions, that, um, we had the most efficient way of doing it for the betterment of the local taxpayers. And so, um, they recommended that we do both of those. That we adopt the 30-year program and that we adopt the, um, interest rate that is pegged at 2% higher than what the town borrows at. And, um, they got those ideas from benchmarking and analyzing what different municipalities around the Commonwealth have done. And, and they found that, um, if you are under this SRF program, you get down to the 0%, it is, is more beneficial for the local residents, especially with the longer payback period. So, so that recommendation came from the Collins Center. It's certainly, the, the entire warrant is just a draft. We put it for the Board of Selectmen's pleasure and it's really your warrant. So if there's any question, we could put it on, put it on at a different date or, or something like that. But that's where that came from.
And I think it's a good idea. I think it serves two purposes. One is to get people to support the wastewater initiative. And secondly, if we're getting that benefit in terms of, from the, from the state, I think we should pass on whatever benefits we have to people who are going to be under a burden if betterments are imposed. And to make it as affordable as we can for our citizens.
And, and I agree with that. Are we going to be able to sustain this through the entire project?
Yes, yes. And, well, you know, the thing, when you talk about project, this, this, Phase One, we're nailed. So, so we're good. Now Phase Eight, okay, so what, it, it will still be, when we do Phase Eight, this will still be in full force and effect. And if the town still gets 0% financing, right, on the later phases, then it'll be pegged 2% higher than that. Now, if the 0% isn't still available at that time and, and we get a, say, a 2% loan, then it's pegged 2% higher than that. So what this does is it just replaces the statutory, it's kind of an arbitrary 5% with 2% higher than wherever the town, so it's designed to float with whatever- with 2% higher than wherever the town, so it's designed to float with whatever financing is out there.
I'm just thinking of equity issues in terms of, you know, are the people in Phase 7 going to be paying the same amount as the people in Phase 1 and 2? And I just don't know that we're going to be able to promise that. That's my only concern about this. I love the idea of encouraging and taking advantage of the zero-interest loans, but, you know, I worry about, you know, maybe 3% so that we're banking a little of that to offset the charges that, we're not going to get 0% loans throughout the life of this project. We know that. You know, that's just my concern is equity, you know.
Phase 7 and Phase 8 is going to be 35 to 40 years.
It won't be in the ground.
I don't think you're going to hear too many complaints.
I appreciate that.
No, I mean, he raises a very, very good point, that if you could pre-fund some of that interest to bank for if some of those funds go away, that way everybody pays the same. You know, it's, it's a great idea. The only thing is, again, when you're dealing with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the towns are, right, but creatures of the state. And we're allowed to do what the statutes provide for us. And right now, they give us two choices. Go 5 or 2% higher than what you borrow at. If you wanted to go 3% higher, what you'd have to take and do is get special legislation. And I will say, when we've analyzed and working with the Collins Center, we look at models for betterments and things all over the Commonwealth. And we made what I think is a very wise decision, that we were going to try to avoid special legislation. There's towns that have gone down that path and have waited five, six years for their special legislation and still, you know, people say, "Well, you got the statutes, why don't you just follow them?" You know, and so what we're trying to do is make it so everything is the lowest cost we can get to lower, you know, for property taxpayers and the best of the state system.
Okay.
So-
That makes sense. I didn't understand that it was either or.
Right, and I know, doesn't it seem strange?
Bob, I, on that, I think there should be some clarifying language, that this is for now and maybe not available later on. If, if our, you know, it does say that it's 2% above our borrowing costs, but I think, I think that should be emphasized, that it will be 2% above our borrowing costs. Now, 10 years from now, we may not, we may not be able to get the 0%. In addition, borrowing costs may be 6%. And we're going to be lending somebody at, at 5%?
Bob, do you think it's possible just to put Phase 1 in there, a reference to Phase 1?
Well, it's, it's not correct. You can't do that. You can, you can say whatever you want, or you can print whatever you want in the explanation. But the statute contains the language that you have to do to adopt this. And what it does is, if you adopt this, that's what Article 26 does. And it sets what it, what it does right from the statute. Now, what, what is that discussion is, what's the impact of that going to be on future generations?
Correct. And, and, you know, as Bill said, you know, is it just for Phase 1? Or is it Phase 1 through 8? We don't know what's going to be Phase 1 through 8.
But it's, it's forever. Once you adopt this, this, this goes in the back of the town book. Unlike the things that you adopted in 1915 that are still there, right?
Okay, so, so it-
It's just a better way of doing it.
Right. I would just, I would just say something then, you know, I like the preamble, but your rate will be 2% above the bank's borrowing rate.
Which is currently 0.
Which is currently 0, right. That meets the statute. And, and that, and then if for some reason we are no longer borrowing at 0%, their rate's going to be 2% higher than our borrowing rate.
The other factor is the economy. What is it going to be in 35 or 40 years? What is 5% going to mean in 35 or 40 years? It may be a very low rate of interest.
Could be.
At that point. Harking back to the Carter years, 5% looked really good. CDs were paying 12. Mortgage rates are going 14 to 16%. So you've got economic changes that are going to be occurring over the next 30 or 40 years. It's very, very difficult to predict, project what in real dollars today a 4% or 5% or 2% rate of interest will mean.
In the future.
Hard to predict the invisible hand.
I think though it might say what you're saying, Peter.
Adam Smith, Wealth of Nations.
It does reference above the interest rate charged to the town, so that would fluctuate as if we have to pay an interest rate. In addition to this, we have the O&M surcharge, which is going to increase over time per phase, because the budget, it's a percentage, 25% of the operation and maintenance budget. So as you get into the later phases, it's 25% of the budget, wastewater budget.
The other variable could be, as Bob pointed out before, you know, you could have other towns buying into this wastewater project down the road, which could really affect costs dramatically. And so people in later phases could be benefiting in that respect.
All right. So maybe we could try to tweak the explanation. I guess my only point was, we have a little flexibility in being clear with the explanation, but the part about accepting the statute, that, that's the state's language there?
I just think the explanation needs to get cleaned up.
I got you, I'm with you. We'll take a cut it, just trying to be a little clearer, you know?
Okay, we're on to 27.
Okay, Article 27 is the opioid settlement, which DOR requires us to take in the opioid money. Then it closes, you know, into the general revenues. And then we're supposed to appropriate it after the fact. And so that's what this is. So this 48,0298-17 is not future revenues. These are the revenues we collected last year. And now we're appropriating those to be spent for the specific related services.
Right. At the, at our last meeting, Mr. Forrest had a chart showing all the relative amounts of even, even places on the Cape, other towns on the Cape, much smaller than us, that are getting twice, three times, four times what we're getting, or even more. And Mr. Flanagan, Representative Flanagan, talked about this evening about, you know, maybe that's being revisited. Do you have any, any indication that this might be revisited? I, I think we've been shorted somewhat on this, on this funding here.
I can tell you that Mark Forrest called me and wanted me to mention what Chris presented when he came in, that he is trying to work at the state level to see if he can resolve this. He also said that the Assistant County Administrator is also involved in working on this project as well. No guarantees, but they're trying to adjust that.
Fantastic, thank you.
So 27 is the opioid funds. And again, that's recommended by the Finance Committee, and that's where they stopped off. And then we get into Article 28 is the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund. And it's broken down between their administration, special events, marketing. So that's Article 28. Article 29 is the first of several community preservation articles. This is the standard one that establishes the annual revenue mix for the different components, whether they be housing, historic preservation, open space and operating expenses. And from those amounts, that just allocates what their total budget is to the statutory areas. And then we move into Article 30, which is the actual projects. And it starts with housing. And they have the Boardable Housing Trust. And we had the hearing with the CPA, I think, last meeting anyways. And then the Harvard Community Medical Council, total 500,000. And Article 31 is an amendment.
Bob, just, a mechanical thing. These are all, these look like they're all Excel spreadsheet items. And, and if they could be aligned at the top of the box, I think it just makes the reading a whole lot easier across. And this, this goes actually throughout all, all the warrant and stuff. It, it just, one of my pet peeves is just so much easier to read from the top instead of having, you know, you know, like, you're looking at Ford at the Rock B. It's, it starts at the very bottom and if you just set the thing-
Go to the top.
Go to the top. I think it just, just makes it, makes it easier to read for most folks. Or maybe just me.
Oh, I got you, yeah. All right, so 30 is the community preservation housing. And then we go to 31 is another housing. And this is an amendment that enables a previous vote of funds to be, allow for rental housing development. Not just a homeownership, homeownership or rental.
If the property were to be sold, is there going to be a permanent rental easement on the thing? Or meeting the-
Debt restriction.
Debt restriction, thank you.
Yes, these are debt-restricted units.
Right. That probably should be in the explanation.
Right, and then Article 32 moves into the community preservation historic resource projects. And those are listed, and I see that same thing where they, they like the bottom of the-
That's what Excel defaults to.
Good to know. So we'll check that. And we've got the Taylor Bray in for 400. And Yarmouth Port Library Historic Preservation from 100. And the Friends Meeting House, 264-188. And then Article 33 moves into the open space and recreation. Writing a note on the formatting there, see if we can impact that. And we've got Friends of Bass River, 167. YD Red Sox, 100,000. And Riverwalk Park, 3 million, undesignated reserve for open space and recreation. And Article 34, to finish off the construction of the Riverwalk Park Boardwalk Loop and event spaces, a $3 million bond from the CPA Open Space Recreation. So they're proposing to issue debt under the community preservation program that will be paid by community preservation funding in the, in the future. And that would finish off that project. That's Article 34.
Should this, this discuss the term of the bond, which I happen to know is 10 years? And, and how much money would be left each year after the principal interest is paid on the bond?
Yeah, now-
Should that be in the explanation, or will that be just described at, at town, town meeting?
Wouldn't the bonding attorney be putting that, all that wording in anyway?
Well, the bonding attorney will write the article, tighten it up, write the motion. The, the explanation could be, and, and I guess the answer is, they provided this explanation for the warrant, but are prepared to make the full presentation at town meeting of all of those details, just like they did here.
Yeah, they, yeah, they provided a very good chart outlining how it was going to work and stuff.
So we will make sure that we get that on the slides up on the screen at the town meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
So that's it for the normal articles. And following that, there are three petition articles that have been submitted. And Article 35 is a petition for plastic reduction, which its purpose is to ban plastic food containers and single-use utensils from food establishment facilities. And that, that's submitted by petition. Article 36 is a petition for a ban of single-use plastic water bottles. That one we've seen before. Final article, Article 37, is another petition. And that is with respect to the Town Bylaws, Chapter 142, which is the water supply conservation in an emergency. And that seeks to eliminate the provisions with respect to the registration of automatic lawn sprinkler systems. And it also eliminates the penalties that are included in the bylaw that was adopted by the town.
Who's the petitioner on that, Bob?
That's Citizens Group, I think Tom Sullivan's one of them.
That's a shocker.
And, and those are the three that received-
Wasn't it 10, you needed 10 people?
Yes.
Is that, yeah.
And they received the certification-
It was a group.
From the town clerk's office.
That's all they need, is 10 signatures?
For an annual town meeting, you need 10 signatures. So it doesn't indicate a massive outpouring, but 10 signatures.
We've got three petitioned articles, and the rest of them are town originating, originated articles.
The plastic ones, are those by the woman that tried to do it last time?
Yeah, that failed the last time we had it, the water bottle one.
That's the water bottle one. I'm not sure if it's the exact same group that's doing the plastic reduction.
I don't know either.
We have the petitions, and I think we sent them around once, but I'll, I'll send them around again just so you get to see, there's not a lot of signatures on them, but you get to see who-
Did any of them ask for time to come in and speak to the Board of Selectmen?
Yes. In fact, I had discussed that with the chairman a little earlier. But we thought, I, I knew, you know, we're going to be very busy with you looking at the articles, but it, it may be for the petition articles, if we can reserve either on the 21st or the 28th, maybe five minutes each to have a chance for the people that submitted the petitions.
You know, when we do the actual preview.
Well, the only thing is that, and this is why I wanted to bring this up with the board, is the schedule is such that you'd be asked to make recommendations on the articles on March 28. So what I was hoping that if anyone's going to make a presentation to you, at, at least before you do the, your recommendation, we give you the opportunity, maybe at least hearing from them a little bit, and then deciding whether you want to make a recommendation or what that might be.
Do that, or you can do it, just recommend from the floor for the three petitions.
So that's the kind of what's-
We could do that, we could do that.
Because didn't you say, Bob, that you wanted to kind of reserve the 21st for the budget discussions? And the 28th would be for the town articles?
Correct.
So wouldn't it make sense then, if you're going to have the petitioners, to have them on the 28th?
I've been on April 4.
Sure.
And then, and then put on, the Board of Selectmen will make a recommendation on town meeting floor?
Yeah, we frequently do that.
Yeah.
And then keep in mind also that, you know, we, we do the meeting an hour before town meeting. And I think by that time, you might even be in a, have more information to use to base your recommendation.
The other thing I want to mention is on the, the one to amend the water conservation article, we've been through that article in its entirety in great depth. And I think everybody's familiar with it. This just applies to repealing two subsections of that article. everybody's familiar with it, this just applies to repealing two subsections of that article. So I don't, I don't think we have to spend a lot of time on that. On the plastic bottles, again, we've been through that whole thing before, pro and con. The other article, we have not, I don't think dealt with, the other petitioned article. But I wouldn't think we would need to spend a whole lot of time on, on those articles. They don't seem very complicated. And again, two of them are old news, really, I mean, we've been through those before. It's not to say they're not important issues, it's just, I mean, I, I think we all understand what the arguments are going to be on both sides, and, you know, then we just have to get together and stake out a position.
Well, I'm glad that you brought that up, because that was a major question I had, I think that clarifies a lot.
Yeah.
We'll put on, for the town meeting review, part of the town meeting review is, we'll have the petitioners on, and they can walk us through the article. And that'll be the preview. And that'll look perfectly-
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. And as Dan said, we can reserve on those until we have our meeting before town meeting, if we feel so inclined. Here, Chris.
First of all, God bless you to all of you, this is amazing. I did have a couple of observations when you were going through these, and what I'm going to do is, I'll send a note to the town administrator about some things that I just thought right away, could use a little bit of point of clarification, rather than having to wait until the fourth, when it comes up again. It's just sort of, in some instances, it's sort of the geography of where some of the citations are, what you're talking about, that I think if it was included right there briefly, it would help a little. So a couple of things like that.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
I will, I will forward it to you in the next day or so.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else, questions or comments about the warrant? We will get, you know, some more discussion on this, and some presentations on capital and some other things, so.
If, if we can fit in a presentation on the diff, it doesn't have to be long, it's, it's usually you want to sort of adopt that and have a hearing on it-
Yeah.
-as part of the process, so.
I think, I think we really got to drill down on this wastewater financing, so that we understand it very well, and so that the people do as also. Because if, if you want the town to take a serious look at this, you got to make sure there's no misgivings or misunderstandings, or people saying, you know, I don't want to support this because I'm not sure where it leaves me. We want to avoid all of that and have very clear answers to questions. That's going to be critical. So if we have to allocate time, I guess what I'm saying is, on wastewater, is that's going to be a priority in terms of our preparedness, and we're going to kind of build around that. Okay, so you want to move on? Everybody ready to do that? Boarding Committee actions, Dorcas.
Yes, this is a position that will be replacing Tom Kelly on the Community Preservation Committee. Once again, Tom was a longtime at-large member of the committee who passed away in October, and will be greatly missed, but I'm recommending that we appoint Luke Wilczynski as the regular member at large to the Community Preservation Committee with an appointment for a three-year term that will run through July twenty twenty-six.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? So that's the unanimous vote, four to zero, one member absent. Is that all we have for you tonight, Dorcas?
That's it.
Just the one item?
Right.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have approval of minutes of March sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, may I recommend that we move that to our next agenda item? Because both Mr. Smith and myself would not be able to vote on the March sixteen or the April five minutes.
Sure, we can defer those.
I think you can vote out of necessity.
Well, they could, but what's the point? Mark will be here, and we can, right? You're, you're correct, they could vote out of the rule of necessity, you want to vote. But we'll defer, we'll defer March sixteenth and April five. How about February seventh of twenty twenty-three?
Move to accept.
Okay, we have motion approved, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? So that passes by a vote of four to zero, one absent member.
Mr. Chairman, on the April fifth-
Yep.
Stone was here, Worgen was here, and Smith was here, so we got three of the people.
You were at this, you were at that meeting?
Yeah, I was at that meeting. Do we have enough people to vote that, three people?
Yeah, three works, three works.
Yeah, April fifth, okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes of April fifth?
May I make that motion?
Second.
Do we have a second? Dan, you second that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dorcas, you're abstaining?
Yes.
And we have one member absent, so that passes by a vote of three in favor, one abstention, one member absent on April, was it five?
Mm-hmm.
So that's approved. And we just have to look at March sixteenth, that's no big deal. Okay, upcoming agenda review, do we have to talk about that, over and above what we discussed here tonight, as to our next few meetings? Dan, Bob, do you have anything on that?
No, we covered the major items that, next meeting is going to be the twenty-first, and we're going to have a public hearing on the budget, on the capital plan, on the school department budget. We're going to have another review of the town meeting warrant. We may have something on the, more on the diff, we're going to hone that down, and there's a couple of other items, some licensing, shouldn't be too much. And then, we're going to be back to it on March twenty-eighth, so we're going to have, you know, back-to-back meetings, the twenty-first, the twenty-eighth, and April four. But that's going to enable us, on April four, we put in that special meeting, so that we can have the annual meeting preview.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that, that'll be very valuable to people. We're going to, on the twenty-eighth, though first, we're going to come in, we're going to review the final recommendations on the warrant, and we're going to have a detailed discussion of wastewater, any of the financing, what it means for individual homeowners, everything there. And there's a couple of hearings also, and we're going to try to acknowledge Sue Ripley, treasurer-collector. Now, a couple of other things I was going to mention in my town administrator report, but I want to put on, April four, a couple of things we want to do is have a recognition for Bruce Murphy, retiring after forty-three years of service to the town. That's just astounding. What a record of service, and what a great man for accomplishing that for the town of Yarmouth. I just can't, can't say enough for that.
When, when is his retirement date?
June.
June, but he's going to be using up a lot of vacation time and stuff, so he's going to be going out pretty soon.
Boy.
I also, on April four, this, you know, came up, I was just able to confirm it, we want to have a special ceremony for the swearing-in of our new fire chief, Enrique Arasque, who has a start date of April three. And so, happy to have him all ready to roll, and it's an exciting time there. And, you know, it, which brings up another thing that we, thinking that we'd like to try to do, not that same night, but, but maybe if we could do it at the beginning of the meeting on, on March twenty-eighth. I think we all owe acting fire chief John Sawyer a debt of gratitude for, you know, not only his continued service as the deputy chief, but stepping up and being the chief of the department for almost a year, performed exemplary, and, and really, you know, took the town through some, you know, icy waters in terms of with all of the federal grants for all the equipment, and the proposals for the manpower, everything that he's done. So I hope to have some type of, if we can get him in, for just a recognition, a special thanks for service above and beyond.
What date would that be, Bob?
March twenty-eighth.
All right. I think we're pretty much packed through town meeting. Eighteenth is a, is a holiday. Then the town meeting's on the twenty-fifth, so. Unless anyone has anything on agenda review, I would like to move forward to individual items. Dan, do you have any individual items?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Dorcas?
All set, thanks.
Peter?
It can wait. Nothing, nothing for this evening.
The only thing I'll say, it's not really an individual item, but I was talking to Mark, I'm not real sure why he wasn't here, other than he had other commitments he couldn't get out of, but he did assure me that he would be watching this and being up to speed on these budget items. You know, so that's good, that's good, I'm sure he will. We have a consent agenda.
And on that, we have approval of shellfish regulations and the EverSource request for location of underground cables, conduits, and manholes on Pleasant Street.
A motion to accept the consent agenda is written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? The consent agenda passes by a vote of four to zero, one member absent. Next is town administrator updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, just a housekeeping item. With parade day coming up on, on Saturday, we're working with everyone to make the arrangements. I'd ask any board members that haven't contacted Mary Alice Florio in the office, let us know if you plan to attend, we want to make sure that we have, the board of selectmen have their special carts, and if you'd like to have one of those to drive, we want to make sure that, you know, we have the right numbers. So I think we've heard from most people, and-
Stay away from the Clyde's deals.
Stay, stay away, they told me that I was going to get to go behind the elephant this year. Exemplary service, but, so, and I guess the parade's at eleven, so try to be there by ten or so, we don't want anyone to get caught.
Yeah, I was talking to Dorcas about that. What they generally recommend is, they usually tell you parking places that you can park at at the end of the parade, and then they have buses that'll transport you back to the beginning, so that when you're done, you're, you'll be, have access to your motor vehicle.
But what happens with the golf cart?
It was a long walk back.
Then, then you got to, you got to bang a U-turn and go along the gutter on the side and drop it off back at Skull Island.
Right, so for us that are using the golf carts, we need to park at Skull Island and not-
Skull Island.
And not for the bus drop-off.
You know where, I parked last year worked really well in the, there's that Stop and Shop parking lot that is right down the road in back of Skull Island, and Skull Island is like a, too much of a hub of activity with all of the wild animals and everything, so there's that big, huge, parked in that big lot in the back and just walked over.
And also, right next to Bass River Liquors is the, is the old Baptist cemetery, and there's usually four or five parking spaces along there, and that's where I parked last year. And my grandmother's buried there.
Of course, if you had a real fancy car, they might let you just drive-
Did you take, did you take a golf cart?
I walked.
Yeah, but-
Both directions.
So how did you get back?
I walked, both directions.
Oh, you walked back too?
Uphill.
Both directions.
Both ways, in the snow.
I get, I get it.
Okay, so I was going to talk about the fire chief, we did that, and also the school budget. Just, it's nice to take a breath, these are some of these things that, you know, you spend months and months working on, and it's like, just nice to see everything moving forward, and, but I do have a new item, I wanted to spend a couple of minutes on, I usually don't do this, but this is kind of a big item, and I just want to introduce the topic of it, because we're going to have a lot more discussion about it, and, and I want to make sure that the board is very highly briefed. I left at your places a feasibility study for a regional emergency communications center for the towns of Barnstable Sandwich and Yarmouth, and this was also completed by the University of Massachusetts at Boston, Edward Collins Center for Public Management. And it's a fascinating study, and I, and I want to tell you how this whole thing came about and what, what we've been doing. The Board of Selectmen adopted last year as part of their strategic planning, you know, one of the priorities, not the highest priority, but it was in the mix of evaluating, combining the dispatching between the fire department and the police department, and it's long been felt that there's a tremendous amount of efficiency and service that could be gained by, by doing that, but we always had a problem in the past, should it be done by the fire, should it be done by the police, who's in control, and, and it sort of, you know, had things stymied, and the board had asked me to work with the public safety chiefs and see if I could break the logjam, and I started working with acting chief John Sawyer and chief Kevin Lennon, who both, I feel, showed tremendous leadership. I think, you know, the board talked to chief Lennon right in the interviews about that process, and, you know, he was highly motivated, and, and I felt chief Sawyer was as well. And so, the two of them began the process of evaluating the potential of combining these dispatch units. And as part of the process, they reached out to the town of Barnstable, that recently had a successful consolidation of the town of Barnstable Police Dispatch with, in their case, it's not even a town department, it's the Hyannis Fire District. So they've combined the dispatch between the fire district and the police department in a fairly seamless way, and, you know, we're talking about a lot of the benefits they accrued through that. So our public safety team began talking to Barnstable to see how they did it, and just at that time, the chiefs over in Barnstable were talking about going to the next level, and seeing if they can build upon the success that they found in combining the police and fire with bringing in, because of the, you know, the number of calls that they had, that they felt that they could operate regionally with some other towns, and get even more efficiency out of the model. So they discussed that with chief Lennon and acting chief Sawyer, and the two approached me and asked if it would be okay to apply for a grant through the state E nine one one to study a potential regional solution associated with Barnstable and one other community, which turned out to be the town of Sandwich. So I said, you know, with the leadership of the chiefs, both, this is after, you know, having no one agreeing, you know, for, for many years, both to study the potential benefits of the, the regional model, I approved that immediately, and so the, the town of Barnstable, working with our two chiefs, and also the town of Sandwich, was successful in getting a consulting grant from the state E nine one one folks, and they hired the Collins Center just to do a feasibility analysis. And lo and behold, I, I think that the potential benefits, as they were studied, seemed to sort of surprise everyone just how great they were. In terms of the financing alone, because if you're- In terms of the financing alone, because if you're accepted into the state program as having an inter-town agreement for dispatching, it triggers in that the state is very well-funded through the cellular telephone 911 surcharge, that in the next year, they're going to be looking to spend about $40 million on having towns work together for dispatching. And they have a financing model that they will pay for the cost of operating your system for five years, and it goes, the first three years, they pay 100%. Fourth year, they pay 75%. In the fifth year, they pay 50%. And if the town of Yarmouth was in that arrangement, we would save in that five-year period over $800,000 in dispatching. But the study pointed out that the benefits beyond just the money of having a regional system was first and foremost to standardize the dispatch protocols that are used and professionalize the dispatch system rather than have it like independent and different for every unit, to be able to put more dispatch personnel onboard, you know, to handle when major events occur. By having more calls, you get a larger dispatch system. There also, you're able to have dispatch supervisors and better training for the dispatchers. The, again, financial support from the state contributions has enormous cost savings. It potentially enhances the mutual aid between the municipalities. And the feeling is, through their studies, they feel it's a much more efficient public service for emergency response because it's more standardized, that they can get, even going, you know, from Barnstable to dispatch the Yarmouth equipment, it can be done quicker, more efficiently, and professionally. And so it turns out that there's a lot of potential benefits, and this is just the feasibility study. So what I would like to do is, at this point, introduce you to the feasibility study that was performed, and the report's dated March 2, I think, so we just got it in. And what I approved our chiefs to do is that all of this would, you know, is funded through the E-911 system. And by doing just the feasibility program, you know, you don't know whether you'll potentially be accepted into the program. And so I authorized via a letter for our chiefs to apply, along with Sandwich and Barnstable, to see if the state is interested in taking us on as a group and potentially working with us. And that would obviously be completely up to the board of selectmen in terms of whether we go this route. But I think we need to find out, is there an opportunity to do this? And so by introducing you to the study, I wanted you to get, you know, some of the detail there. And then what I was hoping I could do, I know we're straight out with town meeting, so I don't want to interfere with our preparations in any way, but I would like to schedule, maybe at our earliest convenience, it might be right after town meeting, a briefing for the board of selectmen from the public safety professionals on how they feel about this dispatching. I was honored, they invited me to participate in the system, and I had a great meeting with the R2 chiefs, the chief in Barnstable, the Hyannis fire chief, who's another one of these young, up-and-coming professionals. And we had the town managers for all of the towns and the E-911 team from the state, as well as the UMass Collins Center. And as we went through this, I was very impressed with just all of the potential benefits here, and I think we could kind of revolutionize the way these public safety communications are done in a way that is far closer to, you know, the more advanced areas throughout the nation and far above the efficiency that we do it now in a way that can help both of our departments. And so I'd like to have them have the opportunity to have their experts in, and have you grill them. Let's talk it over, and then we'll see whether the state wants to work with us. Take this thing one step at a time, and if it works out, it may be something that's very beneficial for the town. But it certainly, I think, addresses some of the concerns that the board had with respect to the emergency communications and how to increase the efficiency. So my purpose tonight is to just let you know about all of this. I have learned so much in a short period of time that, you know, I think it'll be our next thing that we sort of wrap our arms around and discuss, and we determine whether it's right, you know, for a community.
Can you talk about bringing the professionals in to have a briefing? Were you thinking about just the Yarmouth professionals, or were you also talking about bringing in the professionals from the other towns as well?
You know, if I had my druthers, I would include the team that studied this. So you've got the chiefs from Yarmouth, and then there's the Hyannis chief and the Barnstable chief, and then the Sandwich people. And if possible, the professionals from the UMass Boston, which they use people that have long distinguished careers in emergency communications and really bright people. I don't know if at this point we need to get the state 911 people in, because I think just with our local people, it's a good discussion. And then if things progress from there, you know, we'll have more discussions with the state 911. But that's my thing. I think, yeah, maybe to have the people from the three towns come in and meet with you.
When might you know that there's eligibility for this kind of a dispatch partnership? How long do you think it'd take the state to respond and say, yeah, we think you would qualify for this?
I think the way it works with the state is that, you know, they don't give you a big approval all at once, but they would approve us to, I think the next decision is, is maybe it's going to take a month or so, and they would determine if they're going to give us like a feasibility design study for what the space would look like. Right, and so it's, they take another baby step with you. And then now we're getting an architect in to, and the folks over at Barnstable indicate that they have a site that's directly adjacent to the police station, which is, is that over on the corner of Finney's?
Finney's.
And that that's a potential site that they could build something, which would be 100% paid for by the state if we're accepted as a unit.
Would the state pay for the, assuming they, like you said, enter the first baby steps of the project, would they pay for the design work as well?
Yes, and they would pay for the feasibility design, and the state guy said that, look, if, you know, they don't give you too much money at once, but they start the process. And what they say is that, we don't give you the feasibility design money with the idea that we're going to leave you out hanging if you want to move ahead with it. So it's a, it's a sort of de facto entry into the program. They're kind of saying, if they accept us, they'll fund the feasibility design, and then if we want to move forward, they'll fund the full design, and then they'll fund the construction. But we're not tied in until, if a process like this moved forward, it would be done through an intermunicipal agreement, which, I want to be clear, the way intermunicipal agreements work now is they've been delegated by the state, it used to be a town meeting thing, to the discretion of the board of selectmen. So in my opinion, this entire process and emergency communications in general are a subject matter that's dictated and controlled by the board of selectmen. So this board would be the key to the whole process. So that's why I want to make sure that you are brought into it from right now and have the information you need. And at some point, you know, you would approve, okay, are we going to do this feasibility design? And then, and then if that looks good, are we going to do the next step? And then ultimately, are we going to sign an intermunicipal agreement with these two towns that combines the dispatching? And at that point, it becomes kind of permanent because you're starting to take a lot of money. And I was surprised to see how much money that we're not getting now because we're not involved with anything the state's doing on this. There's a major push to improve emergency communications, and it's well-funded. And up to now, we've been sort of outside of that, but there's a lot of room to participate.
Certainly seeing $830,000 savings is something to take a look at. That was the first thing that jumped out at me.
Well, I'd be interested in hearing, the money's always good, obviously, but will I be interested in hearing from the professionals' response time? I mean, that's kind of the critical component to this. How long is it going to take? Is it going to, is it going to take, if it takes as long, then it's neutral and you look at the money, right, the savings? But is it going to be a quicker response time? Is it going to be a slower response time? That's what I'd be interested in hearing about. I would assume there's an efficiency here, or towns wouldn't be doing this. But if I understand it, this would be like a relay system, would it not? It would come in, like a Yarmouth call, for example, come in through Barnstable and then relayed?
Well, what we hope to do is not do the relay. Some of the towns like Falmouth, they work with the county, but they don't have a regional dispatch. They have a relay system where it goes back to their town, and then they dispatch it. The model that's the most efficient would be to...
Directly dispatch.
Dispatch directly. Have our professional dispatchers...
Right.
...in a center, they get the call, they can dispatch the equipment, and that way you skip the middleman, and that saves time.
So what kind of a model is the one you're talking about? Is it going to be a direct dispatch?
Direct dispatch.
It would be, okay.
It would be a true regional emergency communications center.
Okay.
They would dispatch for the three towns.
So we would have some of our people in that facility?
Correct.
Along with the other towns' dispatchers?
Correct. We would build one unit, right? And, you know, say, we have our dispatch team, the, our top dispatchers would fold into that unit.
Okay.
So the supervision would be different, you know, because then we would have, there would be a dispatch supervisor. And, you know, it would be very good for dispatching as a career as well, because it makes it easier to get in on the ground level, but there's also promotional opportunities that you have within that, so you can make a career out of it. Where, you know, one of the problems that we have, you know, say, over in the police, we have all the dispatchers. Now, they're supervised by the duty sergeant, which, you know, they're highly qualified individuals, but it's very difficult if you have pressing public safety needs, and then the dispatchers have to operate on their own because they can't be supervised as close as you want. So by having the staff consolidated at one unit, you're able to have...
Yeah, I mean, that's critical work. They have to get that information, it has to be accurate, they have to keep people calm, sometimes have to give them advice as to what to do while they're waiting for the rescue workers. If there's a choking incident, for example, or somebody's locked in a space, a child, you know, make sure, you know, jam the door and injure the kid, or, you know, give them some kind of precautionary advice while they're waiting for the professionals to respond. I mean, it's an important position. It's one that doesn't get a lot of attention, but if you hear some of these real emergencies and you're listening to these dispatchers, they can make a real difference.
And we've got great dispatchers, too, that work in both police and fire, and so it's going to be a multi-year process to kind of fold them all together, but, you know, we feel confident that we can get, you know, our people that are hopefully interested in doing it, being the regional people.
Sounds like an interesting, yeah, I look forward to having these people in and having a discussion. As, I agree with you, we probably got our hands full until we get on the other side of town meeting, but soon after that, I'd like to, I'd like to get this on the schedule.
So it's in the mix, and I was excited to see the study and to get the report, and we're going to stay focused on our wastewater. That's really, and this town meeting is huge right now, but I just wanted to make sure at least you had that information, start reviewing that. You'll be asked to look at this as soon as, you know, we get a chance.
Great. You have any other update matters?
No, I think that's it for now. Talked too much tonight.
Okay. You have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned, thank you.